We will now call the joint meeting for the Lompoc City Council and the Planning Commission for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Planning Commissioner Federico Chioni.
Here.
Commissioner Brianna Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Steve Bridge.
Here.
Commissioner Augusto Caddillo.
Present.
And Commissioner Dan Bradisher.
Present.
Councilmember Victor Vega.
Here.
Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Gilda Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Protam Jeremy Ball.
Present.
And Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Tonight, our joint meeting is actually new business. To begin with, we have the adoption of Resolution Number 96822 and 653222 approving the Lompoc Streetscape Multimodal Improvement Plan. And we have Brian Halverson, our Planning Manager, to provide an introduction and presentation, followed by a discussion, public comment, and a vote on accepting it.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Planning Commissioners, Chair. I just wanted to first start the presentation by just thanking everyone for joining this meeting. Obviously, we don't have a lot of joint meetings, so to have everybody here at the same time to consider this item, I think it's ideal. I wanted to just do a quick introduction of the project team, and then we'll get going. Nope, my clicker's not working, but maybe next slide, we'll do it like we used to. So this has been a collaborative effort between city staff, our consultant, as well as Caltrans. This was a grant that, believe it or not, we received in 2019, and we've been working on it for a little while. We were hit with COVID and a lot of other challenges, including staffing, but to get to this point, we're very excited to unveil this plan that, actually, the city of Lompoc has not had a streetscape plan since 1973. So that was actually a Cal Poly project that was done, and actually, some of it has been implemented, but a lot of it has not. Tonight, as part of the project team, we have our Assistant Public Works Director, Craig Durling, is in the back here. Our consultant, planning consultant, is Debbie Rudd, also in the back, as well as Adam Vest, it's an engineering firm with Tool Design, and then Hannah Megstob with Caltrans District Five, who will also speak a little bit tonight regarding this project. This project also has been shaped by the community. We've had a variety of workshops, including one at our community market back in December. We've had surveys online. We've had meetings with stakeholders to make sure we don't miss anybody that might be interested or affected by this plan. And overall, we're gonna, the consultant is gonna present some proposed improvements for both bike and pedestrians and other modes of transportation, as well as beautification of our state highways, additional signage, and even introducing some art along these state highways. So it's a very exciting plan. And lastly, before we move on, I want to just emphasize that these are conceptual plans, kind of like a developer comes to the Planning Commission, and before that project's built, they need to refine those plans, go to the building permit level before they actually construct anything. So these projects will need further study if the plan tonight gets approved. And also, probably the most important thing is funding. So this plan will be used in order to apply for funding for some of these projects, if not all of them. So with that in mind, I'm gonna go ahead and pass the rest of the presentation over to Debbie Rudd. She's our Principal Planner with RRM Design Group.
Can you go over this next slide? Actually, I'll go ahead and mention it. Good evening, City Council Members and Planning Commissioners. I'm Debbie Rudd from RRM Design Group. So to start off, we had a few key project objectives that we were striving to meet. It included a complete street approach for improvements of multimodal access and connectivity. It also included repairs and enhancements to your streets and sidewalks. It included improving the safety and comfort of walking and bicycling along H Street and Ocean Avenue, and included sidewalk and crosswalk improvements. A big part of this was to really listen to the community and involve the community from the very beginning and throughout the process, and to identify opportunities for gateways, landscape improvements, other beautification improvements, and finally, to promote safety and efficiency, and to promote it for not only the residents, but also for the visitors. So the project boundary really focuses on Ocean Avenue and H Street. H Street extending from Prisma Road down to Ocean Avenue, and then Ocean Avenue from one boundary to the other city boundary. We started the process with community engagement, and this document that you reviewed is really based on the feedback we received from the community engagement. We had a variety of opportunities for the community to participate. That way, if somebody didn't want to participate in one way, they could participate in another way. That included stakeholder meetings and focus group meetings. It included social media, a website, information on that website. We had a community workshop that was done both in English and in Spanish, and we had a community-wide survey that was done in English and Spanish as well. And finally, we had the community pop-up workshop, which the image on the screen is the pop-up workshop. And again, we had a Spanish speaker there, too, so we could really make sure we're reaching all of the community. So a few key takeaways from the outreach. One was, people really don't feel safe biking along H and Ocean Avenue, and they wanted to improve the safety of both pedestrians and biking. The high speeds on the streets is part of the reason. If there's ways that we could slow the traffic, that would be helpful. They want to improve the bicycle facilities in particular, because they don't feel safe now using their bikes on Ocean Avenue and H. And they had a lot of interest in the enhancement of intersections and crosswalks, and a lot of interest in the beautification measures, like the street art, wall murals, utility box art, landscaping, and trees. That was all popular with the community. Their concern was, besides speeds, was also the maintenance of landscaping, so to make sure that we didn't suggest things that were gonna be hard to maintain. So the plan is broken up into four chapters and four appendices, and like Brian said, this really is a plan that's focused on being more of a conceptual or a vision plan. So it's a great tool for the city to get funding in the future, and it's also a great tool for property owners and developers to have a better understanding of what kind of improvements the city would like to see in front of their property. So it kind of lays out that as a roadmap for them. So we're gonna go over a few key opportunities that are covered in the plan. One of them is the multimodal connectivity, really, that's Adam's expertise of how do we make this safer, some city gateways ideas, and then enhancing the streetscape built With that, Adam's gonna talk to you a little bit about the toolkit.
Thanks, Debbie. Hi, everyone. So first, I'm gonna speak just a little bit about what we consider to be a toolkit for people walking and biking. So the purpose of a toolkit is kind of a menu of options, or kind of a recipe book, and that's to consider all the different types of things that may be appropriate for improving conditions for people walking and biking, while still considering the fact that we're balancing modes, right? It's multimodal study, so we also want to understand how these impacts may affect people that use more traditional modes, like driving or truck traffic and those sorts of things as well. So this includes probably a number of things that you're familiar with, maybe you're familiar with all of them, and then maybe some new ones as well. But that's things, different types of bike lanes, different types of markings on the street, different types of flashing beacons, curb extensions, pedestrian refuge islands, and those sorts of things. So I'm just gonna provide just a quick little bit of detail on these. So there are a lot of different types of bike lane options. There are certainly bike lanes in Lompoc, so you're probably familiar with a lot of these. Most of the ones here today are standard bike lanes, which is just kind of a striped paint, a stripe on the roadway next to the curb line. We're also talking about things like buffer bike lanes, and that's, the picture in the upper right is what, that's what that is. And that's generally just provides more of a buffer, more of a painted stretch when you have more space for bike facilities. We also have what we call separated bike lane, sometimes referred to as a protected bike lane, and sometimes referred to as a cycle track. That option, you can see in the bottom right, is what we call a parking protected bike lane or separated bike lane, and that just means there's some kind of physical barrier separating bicyclists from moving traffic. We're also looking at shared use paths, so that's just wider facilities where pedestrians and bicyclists use the same space. Shoulder bikeway, which is a more traditional bikeway that you see on a lot of streets today, and then a shared roadway, which is really just locations that are typically low-speed, low-traffic volume, where everyone kind of shares the same facility. And these, just a couple more pictures. This one in the upper right is what I would consider to be more of a shared use path. This is actually in San Luis Obispo. This is a constrained location, but you can see there's a kind of a place for people walking and biking in this space. And then the same can be said for the one in the bottom right, but this is a much more advanced condition where you have much more space, and you can have landscaping and things. So the one in the upper right is more of a constrained location, whereas the one in the bottom right is when you have a lot more, a lot more space. We also talk about, in the plan, a number of different types of bike markings. Some of these we call conflict zone markings, like you can see in the upper right, and these are just kind of the green dashed locations that are pavement markings that we typically use where a motor vehicle is crossing the bike lane, like a driveway or an intersection. It's really just a kind of mark that this is kind of a unique space. Advanced bike boxes, that's what you see in image number two, and that's really just a pavement marking that's very visible, but it allows bicyclists to actually make a left turn to kind of get in front of vehicles, so they don't have to do a, excuse me, a two-stage crossing. And number three is a two-stage left-turn box, and that's just a little box that we usually put at a corner to simulate where a bicyclist should store if they are making a two-stage left, much like what a pedestrian would do if you're trying to cross the street. We also have a number of pedestrian kind of tools in this plan as well. High-visibility crosswalk, these are all over the city, you're quite familiar with these, isn't anything new, but we generally try to recommend putting these at all crossing locations versus the more traditional continental crosswalks, which are just the two lines that you see. And that's really just meant to kind of highlight that this is a location where you should expect pedestrians. Curb extensions, sometimes we refer to these as ball belts. You can see in this image here, they're typically at the corners of intersections, and they really serve two functions, right? You're really expanding the sidewalk out into the street some, but it's really to reduce the crossing distance for pedestrians and limit their exposure to motor vehicle traffic, but it also allows for slower right turns. You know, intersections is where vehicles and pedestrians come into contact with each other the most, so this is a kind of a plan to reduce that exposure and also slow turning vehicles across the crosswalk. Pedestrian refuge island, you typically see these in locations where you have a median or maybe you have a continuous left-turn lane, and this is really just to allow a two-stage pedestrian crossing. If it's a really long distance, the intent is to allow pedestrians to have a refuge in the center of the street so they can cross in two stages and not have to do it all at once as well. These are typically supplemented by flashing beacons and lights and those sorts of things, and I'll talk about those in just a second as well. So we're recommending two different types of flashing beacons. One is what we call rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or an RFB. You actually have a few of these on H Street today. I think there's one at, if you, actually, I think there's two or three just west of, I'm sorry, they're on Ocean, not on H, so Ocean and K, for example, is an example of one. And we've identified a few other locations where we think these may be appropriate. And then there's a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and these are generally larger infrastructure, more costly, but we see them in locations where the streets are actually larger and more visible as well, and we've identified handful of locations where we think these may be appropriate in the city as well. And then the last one here is what we just consider street reconfiguration, and I think the reality in kind of an urban setting is that oftentimes we try to squeeze every mode into one space, and sometimes that's not possible, so that means that something has to, you have to give, whether that's removing parking, or removing a travel lane, or removing a turn lane in order to maybe increase the width of the sidewalk, or add a bike lane, or those sorts of things. So we can talk through some of those types of considerations as well.
So I'll talk about some of the streetscape improvements and recommendations. Three that I'm gonna talk about tonight are the gateways, the utility box art and murals, and the enhanced crosswalks. So gateways are a great, a great tool to provide that transition as somebody is entering Lompoc. It alerts drivers that you're entering a community, it's time to slow down, and it gives, it's also a great opportunity to create some identity for Lompoc, or continue that. The monuments that we're showing, we picked out three different locations for monuments, and we designed this, they wouldn't be designed exactly like this, but we wanted to create a vision for that, and they're designed so you could have a changing display. There's some people in the community who really wanted a digital display, and then other people who were a little bit hesitant to that for cost or other reasons. So what we're showing here is it could be a digital, or it also could be a banner that attaches to that monument. And by doing a monument that is a changing display, it would allow you to advertise not only welcoming visitors, but you could advertise events that are happening, you could advertise a safety concern, there could be other things that the city puts up there, and any monument that was proposed, we would have to work with Caltrans to make sure that it is safe, that we're not changing the display, and it's not a distraction, that it's in the right location, but we've identified a few locations that this could be viable. Another popular item with the community was painting the utility boxes, and so that, we're calling that utility box art, and also the murals were a big popular item. These both provide the opportunity to enhance Lompoc's theme of arts and flowers and create some unity throughout the downtown or throughout the entire corridor, and also help reinforce the identity through the expression of Lompoc's culture and history, like your murals do Another popular item were the enhanced crosswalks and paving. Both either concrete brick was popular, or doing something like you see here with the murals on, as the crosswalks. These would only be on key areas that you get a lot of bang for your buck, and they also would have to go through a Caltrans review, an approval, and exception because they're not an approved typical sidewalk that Caltrans would approve. We also identified two opportunity sites that we feel like have a big impact on your downtown and the improvement of those, so we tried to create a vision of what would that look like if those got improved, and how could that change things. So this first one is at Ocean Avenue and H Street, and you can see the before with the theater building in the background, and then the illustration or vision of how that could be developed, and how it activates the sidewalk, bringing outdoor dining along that sidewalk, really creating a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere right along that street frontage. The second opportunity site we looked at was at Walnut and H. You can see the theater in the background there, though the theater's gonna need this parking lot eventually. In the interim, is there something that the city can look to do to upgrade that and create a use that would really activate that area? So what we're showing is a use that is a temporary use. We're showing a crate, sea crate building with food and beverage, string lights, outdoor dining, an improved area for the food trucks, and some improved landscaping, so that in this next however many years it's gonna take the theater to be able to move into their plans, plans for improvements of that parking lot, the city could actually use that space to activate it and use it for the community. So I'll have Adam go over some of the multimodal recommendations.
So I'm gonna kind of break these recommendations down into a couple, in a couple ways. One is just kind of the larger vision, and I can talk through some of those on the streets, kind of the full kind of view of the city, and then I'll provide a few kind of concepts for what these could look like, and just to kind of reiterate what's been said before. These concepts are really just kind of a planning vision, you know, there still needs to be quite a bit of design work, or traffic analysis, other types of evaluation to really kind of confirm whether these may or may not work as well. So this is too difficult, I think, to read right now, and I'm happy to go through these after we kind of get into the Q and A on what some of these may be. But this is just kind of looking at both corridors and identifying all the different types of pedestrian recommendations that we have. That's that combination of things that I talked about earlier, locations for curb extensions and pedestrian refuge islands, where pedestrian hybrid beacons, where high-visibility crosswalks may be most appropriate. Again, it's a lot on one map, but I'm certainly happy to kind of go through some of these details when we get to that point as well. Similarly, for bicycle recommendations, it's really a combination of shared use paths, buffer bike lanes, and protected bike lanes. For the most part, on H, mostly until you get north of Central, and on Ocean, east of H, we're really talking mostly about shared use paths, so that's looking at the space that's available today, where there are sidewalks, and figuring out a way to actually widen that in some cases, or just relocate kind of conflicts like poles, or utility cabinets, or all of those sorts of things, to really create a space that's, you know, good for people walking and biking. So the reason for that, and not maybe a more traditional bike lane, is these are still pretty busy streets, there are Caltrans roadways, there's truck traffic, so in order to actually add a bike lane, for example, to these, you have to take away something, and that would be, that something would be a travel lane, and we just consider that not to be viable for some of these locations. So I would say the most kind of controversial thing that I'm happy to talk about is on Ocean west of H, and that's where we're suggesting that a parking-protected bike lane may be most appropriate, and of course, there are some trade-offs there, then I'll show you an example of what that would look like, and what some of those pros and cons may be as well. And then when you get kind of to the northern extents of the city, we're really talking about kind of a buffered bike lane. I will flag that there are two bridges that are pretty crucial to help people walk and bike through the community today, and the one to the north, crossing the river on H, certainly not great if you're biking, because it's too narrow. So now I'm gonna provide just a few kind of conceptual plans, just to kind of give some, an overview of what these may or may not look like, again, kind of pending additional analysis that would need to support whether these can happen or not. So, and these are detailed in the plan, but we identified six of them, I'm just gonna talk about three of them, I think, tonight, but there's three on Ocean, and there's three on H. You know, there's H and Central, H and kind of the trail crossing, and then, of course, what we've considered probably to the center of town, which is Ocean and H, and then Ocean and 12th, and then Ocean and K. So the first one I'll quickly talk about is Ocean and K, so this is just what it looks like today. We know there's a high-visibility crosswalk across the eastern approach today, and there are actually RFBs, or rectangular rapid flashing beacons, that are there today. They're pretty, pretty recent, and again, we've identified a few other locations where we think that may be most appropriate. So I'll walk through this, this is probably a lot of information at once, but when we get into the Q and A, happy to answer these questions a little more clearly. So Ocean is left to right, K Street is north to south in this example. The first thing I'll talk about are just the high-visibility school crosswalks, these are the yellow crosswalks. Today, there's one, we're suggesting they need to be on both sides of the intersection, and that's pretty typical of the types of recommendations that are, we would consider to be complete streets oriented. I think the biggest thing here is that we're showing a parking-protected bike lane, and that's what you see against the curb on Ocean Avenue, and then there's a small kind of concrete median that separates that from parked vehicles. These are, over the past 10 years across the country, have become pretty popular and are a good way to physically separate kind of all modes in this context. Of course, the biggest drawback to this is, in order to do something like this, you would need to remove a travel lane in each direction, so more detailed analysis would certainly need to be done. When we looked at traffic volumes that are available, it suggests that this could be possible if you maintain turn lanes and things at intersections, but again, if we want to have bike facilities on Ocean west of H, you, something would have to go away, because the sidewalks are pretty narrow, the buildings are pretty close to the street, whether that's parking, or whether that's a travel lane, maybe it's nothing, it's just kind of a key consideration. A few other things in this that we're showing are these pedestrian refuge islands, which kind of double as curb extensions, that's labeled as B in a few of these. It shortens the pedestrian crossing distance, allows storage for pedestrians, and allows for slower turns at this intersection as well. And we also would recommend having the RFB, the Rapid Flashing Beacons, on both approaches, so not just on the east approach, but on the west approach as well. So moving on to the next one, Ocean and H, I think everyone's quite familiar with what this intersection looks like, but these are just a few views of what it looks like today. You have some constrained sidewalk locations, we know there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic in this area, you have businesses that are pretty close to the street as well. So this shows that parking-protected bike lane on the western approach, but we're only taking it to H Street. We know traffic volumes are actually quite a bit higher on H Street east, or on Ocean east of H, which is why we're suggesting on H Street and Ocean east of H to actually have shared use paths, which require more space, but it means you could maintain a number of travel lanes that are there today. We're showing a striped buffer in some locations, for instance, if you see kind of the upper-left corner, the northwest corner of the intersection today, we know that large trucks make this turn, so we want to, we don't want to put anything there that would prohibit truck traffic, so they could still make a right turn, which is why you don't have an actual physical separation there, and you have the striped buffer instead. We also have the high-visibility crosswalks across all approaches as well. One idea that we heard from the community and from members of the city as well, it may not be feasible, but it's labeled as F here, which are just some type of bollards along the southern approach, and that's just to allow for street closures, for festivals, for food trucks, for different types of activities that may happen in this area as well. Again, you would have to work out, we'd have to work out the logistics of how that would work, but that's just another consideration, maybe it's a weekend-type thing that could happen. I'll move to one more, which is H and Central. I would say this is probably one of, if not the most congested, busy intersections in the city. We also know that there will be some changes at this intersection as future development happens in the area for kind of auto-capacity changes, so we've incorporated what those plans are into what we're looking at also. In this case, we're, as I mentioned before, on H Street, we're still recommending shared use path on both sides of the street, and moving to the north as it get kind of closer to where the path is today. We are showing a protected bike lane on one stretch, but it doesn't have to be that, it could also be buffer bike lanes if there's pushback from different community members as well. We're showing some of these two-stage left-turn boxes in the corners, that's really to facilitate those two-stage crossings, because we know that Central Avenue obviously has a bike lane as well, so it's just a safer way, as opposed to bicyclists getting all the way over into a left-turn lane in order to make a left. And again, you'll notice that, for instance, there's an extra left-turn lane in the northbound direction, and that's really just considering future development in this area, and try and that's really just considering future development in this area and try to balance all of the different modes. I said I have three, I've got four, one more, and this is Priscilla and, and H, so all the way to the north. We know this, this is a growing area. There are a lot of new homes here, which means there are a lot more people walking and, and we've seen a number of people that, that bike here and also we met with a number of people that live here and also bike throughout the city. So this one's a little bit more complicated. I think the biggest thing here is the northbound right that is there today, which is a large slip lane. We would suggest maybe removing that and obviously need to be studied, but the intent is to slow traffic, but still allow trucks and vehicles to make that right turn, but just from a more traditional right turn lane. We're including buffered bike lanes on, on Priscilla and, and some of these two-stage crossings as well. We're also showing a couple of truck aprons is what we call them and a couple of these corners. And that's really to still allow people to make this turn, but to do it in a slower way. Kind of like what you'd see at a roundabout in the, in the center median. And then we're even, we're showing some, some, there are bike lanes in some of these sections today, particularly to the north and just really continuing those. It's a very busy intersection. So we're also recommending potentially some type of separation, like a bike, bike signal or some type of phase separation between right turning vehicles and bicyclists so that there isn't that, that conflict there. And there, I'm going to turn it over to, to Brian.
Thank you, Adam. I know it's a lot, so I just wanted to conclude with these two slides. Obviously, all of these projects would need more study, more traffic analysis. But in order to kind of seek after that funding for projects that will be prioritized later, especially bringing that back to the council, the plan is needed. You have to have the plan in order to apply for that funding. Right in the midst, I think I've mentioned it at a couple of council meetings, we're right in the midst of updating our general plan. And one of those elements happens to be the circulation element. So again, that will come back to the council as well. Some, but probably not all of these projects will be proposed to the council and as well as the planning commission first on amending the circulation element, especially I would say one of a key recommendation is the bike paths are going to be a key element to update in the circulation element. And then lastly, just as I mentioned, the design refinements and further study would need to be until you implement these things. Tonight, where our recommendation is to adopt first the planning commission resolution, which is 96822, and then of course, the city council resolution as well, 653222. That does conclude our presentation and I wanted to thank you for, it is a little bit longer presentation, but there is a lot of moving parts. So I wanted to thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson, as well as our, our M for the in-depth work you've done and the inclusion with our community. I know that Caltrans is looking to repave H and Ocean, but having this input prior to doing that is really going to be important because a lot of H and Ocean, we don't control. So having us vet some of these ideas and potentially move forward in partnership with Caltrans is a really exciting opportunity. And I just wanted to say that you are well worth the money that the grant allowed us to spend. So, thank you. What I think I'll do is start with the planning commission. If you have questions for staff or comments, we'll let you start. And then once you guys are done, I'll bring it back to council for, for questions and then we'll allow you to make your motion on your portion and then we'll bring it back to ours. So Mr. Gianni, you have the floor for checking in with your commissioners.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just to let, just as a reminder, somewhere in there, we will need to have a public comment session as well.
This is true. So this is staff questioning and then we'll go to public comment and then come back.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne. Are there any questions or comments from the planning commission at this point? All right, Commissioner Badger, sure.
Please use your mic. Thank you.
These meters that Caltrans uses to calculate traffic on roads, are those things specified on how many cars travel through, on that road at 24 hour basis, or do they calculate the flow of traffic certain times a day?
Good question. I do have our Caltrans District Five representative, Hannah, and I don't know if that's something that you can touch on or if we need to come back or Adam Vess.
And please come to the microphone so we can all hear you.
So Caltrans does, they do maintain counts in a lot of these sections of the roadway, so counts are available. They have daily volumes and they also have them for hourly volumes as well, if it's over a 24 hour period. So the, the, we did review the volumes available. They were pre-pandemic, which is pretty important. It's kind of, this is going to wrench into how we collect data, but it's, it's pre-COVID, which suggests it's kind of the, the higher end of, of volumes that we have experienced out here, knowing that things have been quite a bit lower since then.
Anything you'd like to add? Come on forward.
Yeah, so as we move forward for future project, there'll be additional traffic assessment that'll be done. So to assess what the volume is. So that's something that we will definitely do.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Commissioner Cadill?
So just clarification on my part. Doing this and, and moving forward to this would be to secure funding. Has there any funding already been allocated to this project or secured?
No, no funding has been allocated, but we know there's going to be multiple opportunities coming up. And Caltrans has expressed to us that once this plan's approved, they would like to have a meeting with us to talk about some funding opportunities. I don't know if Hannah can disclose any of that right now, but there are going to be opportunities for funding after this plan, hopefully if it gets approved, so.
Yeah, there's definitely opportunities. So once this is, hopefully with your blessing, once this moves forward, we hope to go back to Brian, his team to go over order of priorities, to see what's more important to your community and prep you for upcoming opportunity. There's definitely a funding opportunity in the horizon. So we want your community to be ready for those and take advantage of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, I wanted to actually make that comment that this is, as Brian has pointed out, a conceptual plan. This is essentially a, a way or a tool to be able to go and apply for funding for some of these projects. It doesn't commit us to anything at this point, but if we don't have this plan, then we won't be able to go out and, and apply for those funding. So it's one of those situation where, situations where having the plan allows us to do something, not having the plan allows us to do something if we want to. Not having the plan allows us to do nothing. So that's my comment.
All right. Any other comments from planning commission questions before I bring it back to council for questions, before we go to public comment? Okay, awesome. All right, council, do you have any questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes. Brian, specifically, what are these resolutions that we're approving? They're not included in the report. Is it just a resolution that says whereas we approve?
No, they, Councilmember Starbuck, they are attached to the report.
I must have missed this someplace.
The last page of the staff report.
Yeah, there's two of them, one for the planning commission and one for the city council. You scared me for a second there.
Me too. You know what scares me is the fact that I missed it. Okay, great. I will take a quick.
Tried to keep the report relatively short, but it is in the back.
Well, you know, I'm, we, we have all kinds of paper to look at here. Thank you. I'll, I'll read that in a few seconds here real briefly.
One day you'll all have tablets and you won't even have any paper.
Oh, it'll take forever. My next question is, I'm curious, what are the amendments or modifications we have to do on our general plan to the circulation element?
Good question, very good question. So, so one of the things that we have in the general plan circulation element is the bike routes map. So we would look at that bike routes kind of like two years ago when you looked at the bikeway plan that the public works department presented to you. And actually, the council had some additional recommendations that need to update that circulation element bike routes map. So we would go and look at that map again and, you know, the whole circulation element. And if the council, of course, the planning commission will look at it as well, wants to include some of those, I'm just using bikeways as an example, then that would be, that map would be amended. And other things too that are in the plan based on these projects.
Wouldn't the project happen before the amendment at this point?
I'm sorry, could you restate that?
The project, would it be in progress before you would amend your general plan? Or you're going to amend the general plan in hopes that we get funding for the project?
Correct, yes. And actually, we just had a conversation out in the lobby that it's going to be the plan, amendments to the circulation element will work very closely with the public works department, engineering. And then after that, you know, funding opportunities. And so I would say within the next 12 months, maybe 14 months, that circulation element will be amended because we have the, the consultant already on board.
All right. Well, you just mentioned something else I was going to ask you about, the future funding, the funding aspect of this. How we approve this, we say, hey, this is a great idea, let's move forward on it. Caltrans, do you guys knock on our door and say, hey, we happen to have X amount of dollars to do this? Where, where do we go with it? I know that right now, the Caltrans is going to start doing Ocean Avenue soon, a renovation on it. Wouldn't it be time to already have this in place so that they could not have to do it twice?
Well, I wish that it would have been in place, but Long Poak has never applied for this grant. It's been around for a long time.
Is going to do Ocean Avenue.
Yeah, I can let Hannah speak on that and I know that Craig has been working and Mike have been working on that project. But yeah, we don't have the plan now and we didn't.
So we'll redo it later. When we get a new street, we're going to redo it again when the plan comes in.
I can't really speak on that. I would want to make sure either engineering or Caltrans weighs in on that. But yeah, it would have to come later.
And I do recall us approving the bike plan and saying H and Ocean were missing and this was a key part to bringing it back and making that modification. So for those of us that recall that, it is an important part of it. Councilmember Vega?
Yes, regarding the shared use paths, are, are city sidewalks considered in some of that or are they not? Because it seems like in certain localities in cities, you know, we talked about shared use with pedestrian and bikes, which seems like a more, more normal use, you know, in certain areas. I was just wondering if that's possibly a path, you know, as far as safety, you know, it's going to take some time to put this together too. But I mean, I'm just wondering if that's one of the thought processes, since we have all the corners ADA compliant just about. So it just seems like in our process, we can do things in the meantime also, you know?
Yeah, Adam could, can add to that discussion, but I will say that this one is near and dear to my heart because I, I like to talk to people on a mountain bout and people do not feel safe riding their bike on H and Ocean.
Yeah.
So if we had a shared use path, we could combine pedestrians and, and bikes, but we would have to, of course, the circulation would, element would change and then we'd have to change the municipal code too so that it's legal to ride on a sidewalk. But if you widen it enough and you have good painting and you have a good path, like the one here at the top right, it works really well. Like before I came to Long Poak, I worked on these in Santa Maria and they worked very, very well. We call them multi-purpose trails and these are called shared use path. But yeah, we still need to do the updates in order to make that happen. But it's a, it's a capital improvement project too, because some of those are wide enough. Craig Durley and I went out and looked at a lot of these sidewalks. Some of them are wide enough, but others are not.
Yeah, and it seems like the funding, if you're going to get funding and you do have a high traffic area with trucks and I don't care how many painted lines you put there, there's just too much traffic and it really isn't safe to put a bike against a semi, okay? And it just seems like it would make sense to take them off the beaten path, put a line on the sidewalk, make it wider.
Absolutely.
And then you, you guys can, everybody can ride their bike in safety. You're right, there is a conflict because when I was growing up, it was always if you ride your bike on the sidewalk, it's illegal, okay? But that's the only way you can, you can go up H Street. So let's not make it illegal. Let's just put a path there that says we can utilize it because I'd rather, much rather go up with my bike against someone walking than a, than a truck or, or a semi.
And Caltrans, you know, is here tonight and over time, there has really been a paradigm shift where, you know, it's not a road just for vehicles, but also bikes. But if you don't have the right of way to fit the bikes and the cars, then something has to give. In this case, we're suggesting moving them to the sidewalk, widening it, amending the code, amending the general plan. And now you have a safe path.
You know, and, and just to bring this up, you know, we're, we're, I, I understand this is a positive thing, but we have city buses and there's many times where with bike paths and buses and they stop right in the middle of the road. It's really unsafe that way too, you know what I'm saying? So we have to address a couple of things to make it safe. I understand for the elements, circulation element, we're going to make something positive. But there's going to be certain areas on H Street I think we're going to have to be cognizant of just safety wise.
Yeah, and a lot of the things that Adam shared with, with the council and the commission is, is actually sometimes it's popular and sometimes it's not, but slowing the traffic down. So if you slow it down, people are going to feel more comfortable. They're going to feel more safe in taking these routes. If you have people driving 60 miles an hour, they're not going to feel safe.
Right. And you know, the, the alternative or the alternate routes that we have here, I understand this is focused on H and Ocean. Are there any other circulation elements that focus on it? And I know you mentioned 12th Street or you mentioned, I don't know, I'm sure about A Street. You know, we, we also have to have a, a go around also, you know, in the, you know, all of us have driven even our cars during the busiest times and you don't want to go down there if it's going to be super busy, you know, during lunchtime. So you need an alternative, alternate route if you're going to ride your bike and get through town.
Yeah, I think when the public works presented their, their bikeway plan in 2020, they, they did take that into consideration that there would be alternate routes because there's just no right of way to, to put a stripe there.
Anyway, thanks. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Ball?
Okay, so I had a bunch of questions, but in the interest of time and out of respect for our wonderful planning commission sitting through this, I will narrow it down to just a few. First off, thank you to city staff and for all of you for partnering and helping us imagine and visualize what could happen. This gets me very excited to, I'm a picture person. So to see something of what could be is very exciting. I think we'll start with that. I want to talk about opportunity sites. I think everything that we can do to improve pedestrian safety, we should be as bold as we can. Next year, we get to celebrate 50 years in Long Poak of doing nothing in this regard. So it'd be nice to have an updated plan and to, and to go as bold as we're willing to do or to go. But I know that'll come with a lot of funding. Obviously, we can talk about, a lot about that later. But a lot of this had to do with pedestrians and safety and traffic, but it also included opportunity sites. And obviously, that's not necessarily something easily in the purview of city council. We're talking about private pieces of land. But the community has watched these pieces of property do nothing since before I was born. So I was just curious if there's any insights into how we might look. And before we get everyone in the community excited about what could be, how should we look at opportunity sites? How do we get the conversation on something big started? I'm just curious if there's some feedback from any of you.
Well, Long Poak Theater Group is here, so I think that they'll probably have some comments during the public comment period. Obviously, those vacant sites are along two major highways. You would think they would be developed by now, but they're not. One of them though is a parking lot for the theater. So I don't want to pretend that that's going to be a building there one day. That needs to be preserved. It needs to be improved one day as a nice parking lot for the theater. But the other corner will be developed one day. What it will be, we don't know. An applicant hasn't come in, in a long time that said they want to develop that site. But now's the time to talk about it because it's very common for developers to call planners and other city staff and says, what would the city like to see here? Sometimes we say, well, maybe this or maybe that. And sometimes we say, we'd like for you to propose something and what is your vision for the site? But if the city is looking for something in particular, now's the time to talk about it and to put those ideas on the table.
Awesome. Thank you for that. And I just wanted to, I had a question specifically, I guess a little bit of detail. It was the western part of Ocean Avenue, kind of the elephant in the room a little bit was potentially losing a lane and which I, I feel strongly about. It's, we have people racing down the street. We've had pedestrian issues. But that's a big change when we take away a lane. So I was just curious about, you know, for some of the areas closer to downtown, would that improve parking perhaps by losing a lane a little bit or would it change it at all? And then just knowing that that 246 all the way to the ocean is a truck route. Is it realistic to even think that we could go as bold as to lose a lane there ever or is it just, is, I'm curious on your thoughts.
I guess it depends on who you speak with. It's, it's certainly, you're right, it's the elephant in the room. I think we'd get some pushback from some people, including Caltrans. They'd want to have a detailed analysis to determine whether that can work or not. When we did look at traffic volumes, it, it seems feasible, but you know, there, there are a lot of other factors at play. Parking is certainly valuable to the businesses that are in that area. So we do maintain parking. Where we're showing curb extensions at the corners, it's actually locations where parking's not allowed today. not allowed today, so you're really maintaining most of the parking already. I think that's a pretty important element to that. Including turn lanes, like maintaining turn lanes at intersections is also a really important kind of release valve for, for traffic at intersections as well. Those could be maintained as well. But, you know, it certainly would require some additional analysis. The, the key thing for trucks is ensuring a couple of things. One is that the lanes are still wide enough for them, and so those can easily be maintained to Caltrans standards. The second is allowing them to make turns, you know, that's kind of their, their biggest conflict or issue. And in this area, they're really making that turn at H and Ocean, along that stretch of, of Ocean west of H. So need to make sure that the design allows for that, which, you know, in our concept, that's something that we, we looked at as well and determined that it could work. So I would, I would suggest that it's certainly possible.
Awesome, thank you. And if I could speak with the lady from the Caltrans real quick, I just, I was trying to formulate a question, instead of just saying, thank you for being here, and please tell us how we can step up and show you that we're really not just desperate, but excited to potentially work on a big project with you all. So just a general question is, how can we continue to sustain and show you, or show Caltrans that we, we want big change here, and we want to think big? And sometimes it's just making sure we got the right relationship.
Yeah, I think having this plan is the first step, kind of puts you ahead of others that haven't done those type of plans. So having a transportation planning document where the community's input, you know, the voice of your community has been heard in this document helps us kind of move forward in identifying needs, opportunities, gaps, and so on. So this plan helps you move forward. Whenever there is grant discretionary fund-up opportunity, you'll be one of the agencies, right? You've done your work, here are the opportunities that have been vetted through. The next step would be for us to sit down with you, to go over your priorities, and see which one are feasible, which one are doable, and ultimately put a dollar sign and move forward in that implementation phase. So you're doing the right thing. So this is, having a planning study really helps you move forward.
Awesome, thank you so much for that, appreciate it. And thank you all.
Councilmember Cordova? Also, question for Caltrans. How much of this, well, I guess it could be for anyone, but how much of this improvement plan have you had a chance to actually review, provide any feedback on, or consider? Obviously, there isn't a formal, you know, but how much of this were you able to actually review and consider, and does it fall into what you guys would envision for H and Ocean?
Yeah, we definitely did review and provide input, just to let you know, this is a conceptual plan, it's a high level, so additional assessment needs to happen, where it'd be engineering or traffic study needs to happen, so this is sort of high level. So the next step is for us to sit down and kind of go in-depth and detail, and detail it, analyze and see what can be done. So the plan is the first stage, sort of high level. The next stage would be for us to sit down and see what's doable and what's viable and so on.
And I guess that was my question, is how much of what we've developed so far is doable or viable, and, you know, are we on the right track kind of thing? That's kind of what my question was, I guess.
Yeah, so I mean, some of it, we have to do traffic study, right, to see whether the various different improvement makes sense. So, and additional engineering assessment has to be done. So in a planning study, I think what you have is the community input, the vision of the community, what the community wants, and put together a conceptual plan. The next phase would be to do an engineering assessment, traffic study, to see whether that's a viable option for a project and so on.
And what is your, what is Caltrans' timeframe right now for that Ocean Avenue renovation?
You know, I'm not 100% sure. Yeah, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, thank you. In my conversations at SB CAG with some of our prior District 5 representation, has been about how do we calm traffic? And it has always been told to me that it takes us as a community wanting that for Caltrans to consider it. So this is that first step of us showing that we do want Highway 246 and Highway 1 going through our community, but we also want it to feel like our community. And if we continue to allow it to just be a highway that goes through town that's a high speed and, and is truly treated as a bypass, we won't see the benefits that we actually have from having that in our community. So again, this is such an important next step in really transforming H and Ocean into a part of our community, not just passing through our community. So again, thank you for that. If there's no more questions from council, I'm going to open it to public comment, but I see Mr. Halverson.
I just wanted to see if Craig could come up. I think Craig can address your comment, Councilwoman Cordova, on the timing of the Ocean project.
He's more than welcome, yeah. Mr. Dilling?
Good evening. So as I understand, Caltrans has awarded that project now, and I believe construction will begin sometime in the fall. I'm not sure when the heavy paving and grinding will begin, but I believe the term of the project is around a year or so, perhaps this fall, or else in the spring or summer of 2023, the repaving of Ocean Avenue is expected.
Thank you for that, Mr. Dilling. All right, let's go to public comment, and we will, the phone has been ringing off the hook. Do we have somebody on the line? Okay, why don't we put that through first, and then we'll open it to the in-room. Okay, you're live in the Lompoc Planning Commission City Council meeting. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, Jim Van Kuren from Lompoc. Thanks for developing this plan to help people safely get to the places they need to go while traveling outside of an automobile. I support many of the proposed improvements of this plan, however, some of it continues to over-prioritize the speed of auto throughput over the safety of people outside of an automobile. Also, once completed, the plan does not indicate a long-term funding strategy for continued maintenance. Traffic calming gives people more transportation choices and is the opposite of traffic congestion. Slowing motor traffic improves safety, it encourages people to make a shift in the short trip away from cars and onto bicycles and walking, which motivates them to stay and spend their money here in Lompoc. Prioritizing fast throughput for cars encourages people to leave town as fast as possible, spend their money in other cities. Research shows that when you prioritize bicycle and walking infrastructure, local business grows, it has a positive effect on building wealth, improving health, and you create a sense of place where people want to be, rather than a space that is designed to quickly move through. Many people perceive bicycling as a recreational pastime for people who strictly ride during daylight hours. Like others, both me and my wife commute solely by cargo bike with our children, regardless of daylight, weather, or time of day, to get to the places we need to go. This plan improves safety to those places like the grocery store, restaurants, places of employment, and other businesses within our commercial corridors. Lastly, roads connect productive places while streets are the platform for building wealth within a place. Our current street-road hybrid policy, known as a strode, has made our auto-based transportation system within our community dysfunctional, leading to a financially unproductive city. Investing in more auto-oriented developments will continue to bankrupt Lompoc. Therefore, we need a transportation system that prioritizes safety and reduces maintenance costs, rather than prioritizing speed and volume of cars. Let's focus on moving the greatest number of people through this corridor, rather than moving the greatest number of cars through it. And thank you for continuing to work to improve our communities, much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right.
For those of you listening, if you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201, Did we have any written communications on this item?
Yes, ma'am. You all received a copy of an email from Jim Van Kuren, who I believe was the gentleman who just spoke, and Suzanne Baissa. They were copied and put out in the front for the public, and I'm not sure both of them are on the website, we were, had a little issue there.
Okay, thank you. We will open the floor to public comment. If you are here in the audience and would like your three minutes to speak on this, please come to the podium. Come on, Mark, come on.
It's been a while.
You know how to do this.
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here, and I'm very excited about what I just saw. I think, as you said, Mayor, it is a good investment of money. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that the Lompoc Theater is square in the middle of two opportunity sites, and that downtown H and Ocean doesn't really get beautified without our help. I'm here to say that we're stronger than we've ever been. We raised $150,000 last year, we are raising more than that this year. The citizens have invested a half a million dollars to date in our project. We have done a lot to the theater, we're about to put a couple of murals on the wall, and there's another mural going to go on the north side of the theater from Cliff Lambert and his kids, and Manuel and Zuetta from Santa Barbara will be the artists on that. It's very exciting. Dirk, you had mentioned, how do we get the money for it? And I'm here to say, it's us, and it's you. Caltrans had a matching grant available to beautify Highway 1, and the theater was smack-dab in the middle of that, and could have done it, but we could not do it without partnership with the city. All of the grants that I'm seeing now, all of the grants that I am writing, it requires a partnership between a nonprofit, us, and a public agency, you. I know that staffing issues in the past has hamstrung the city from participating, but I just want you to know that we have funds, we have grant writers, we have able administrators, we are here to help in any way we can. We own the end of that walnut and H lot that we saw in the renderings of a box car thing, happy to discuss any of that. But we can't do it alone, we need each other to do it. So whatever you need, we will provide. If you need us to administer it, we'll do that. If you need us to write grants and identify them, we will do that. This town is transformed when the theater is completed, and almost anything on the list of the beautification of, of that corridor involves the theater. So we are ready to help you and ready to be helped by you, and you have my number. So thank you very much for all of this work, appreciate it. Oh, one last thing, as far as the building on that corner lot that used to be the bank and then the mobile gas station, we have been deemed eligible for historical status. So any plans to build on that would have to go under, I don't think too onerous, but a definite historical review to make sure it would not conflict with the, the status of the theater itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience eager to give us input? All right, seeing no one else rise and no one else call, we will close public comment on this item. I will give it back to the planning commission, so that you guys can make your recommendation and vote on Resolution 96822, and then once you're complete, we'll bring it back to council.
All right, folks, any more questions or comments, or is someone ready to entertain a motion?
I'm going to make a quick comment. I really do like this conceptual plan. I live and work on Ocean Avenue, live on East, work on West, so I am taking that street every day, and I would really love to ride my bike to and from work, and the safety is very important. So I think when the time comes where we're prioritizing what we want, I think the safety of our pedestrians and our bikers is very important. So thank you, everyone, for being here, and that's all my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Anything else? Commissioner Bridge?
I make a motion, we approve 968, and with the Lompoc Streetscape Multimodal Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bridge, can we have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need a roll-call vote? No, that's fine, okay.
All right, the motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring that back to council, and I'm looking for the same. Any questions, any motion? Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll go ahead and move that we accept Resolution 6532, Print C's 22, I did find it.
And it was a tie between Councilmember Balla Cordova, who's going to give me my second?
Well, I'll give you a second, but I just had, you know, some last-minute comments as well. You know, having a cohesive plan that incorporates all of the elements of use and travel methods is a great success for the city of Lompoc. I think it's understated, you know, the fact that a lot of times we miss out on funding opportunities because we don't have a plan for the future, and that seems to have been our legacy all these decades, I hate to say it, but it's true. And being able to bring together this Streetscape's Improvement Plan, bring the element of the circulation plan, the general plan, it helps for developers to really consider too, when we're talking about opportunity sites, because they're looking for feasibility. Does it make sense? Does it pencil out? And without having a clear direction for investors or developers to know what to do in a particular area, it's very hard for them to consider, and it's even harder for them to even go out for funding. So I definitely give a second, and, and I'm so happy to see this, because I think it's a great move forward for our city.
Councilmember Ball?
Do I have time for a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, again, for those that are, haven't been paying close attention at home, or might look this up later, when it comes to making a big change in your community, I've been trying to think, like, what's a local, relatively local example, where it used to be one-way, and then they changed it? So for all of you that go to Pismo once in a while, just off the freeway, that's where the crack crab is and a lot of restaurants, pretty close to the freeway, it used to be just four lanes, not even a stop sign, people just flying through there. And now it has just one lane, it has parking in the center, it has room for bikes and pedestrians, and voila, what do you know, there's a bunch of pedestrians that actually want to be there and spend their money in that place. So just thinking about that, change is hard, Lompoc is resistant to change on occasions, but let's, let's take advantage of this. If there is some money out there, let's show that we're revved up to try to do something big and bold, and yeah, tell your neighbors about it. Use Pismo as an example, it's a, it's a good update. Aside from that, I'd love to, to vote on this.
All right. Madam Clerk, you ready for a vote? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you all for that great discussion. We're going to wrap this up with a discussion of the planning commission activities and related issues. And so this is the committee's platform to let us know concerns, issues, successes, thoughts that you have that we need to hear about, that we can make improvements on, and the floor is yours. Any feedback you'd like to provide?
I got nothing, what about you guys?
Yeah, I am happy to be here with you guys, feel like I'm in the principal's office for a minute, but then I remember we're partners.
Yes.
I thank you guys for everything that's going on. Just a little brief about why I accepted to come to this commission, to take an experience of what I've been through and what I would like the city to be, and hopefully facilitate the ability to get people building and getting stuff done. So, you know, maybe a little more direction of leniency from you to our overall city staff to be able to get things moving a lot quicker. And I know we're constrained by staffing, but that would also bring us way more revenue to be able to keep our staffing levels and, and levels of revenue coming to the city. That was just my only comment, but I've loved everything that we've seen here, super excited about this plan.
Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordio. Do we have any other comments? No? Well, I just would like to thank you for this opportunity to meet with you. I am also very excited about this plan, and I echo some of the, some of Commissioner Cordio's comments. I honestly think there's a momentum going in Lompoc. There's, there have been some changes in the makeup of the city, and the demographics of the city. I think there's a, there's a great potential, there's more potential than there was a few years ago, and I think it's the time to... And I think it's the time to tap into this potential and make some bold changes, as Councilmember Ball was aptly mentioning, and just get into the future with a renewed sense of community and new courage to make this city improve the way it should improve.
Well, and I want to thank all of you. For the public to understand, the Planning Commission is the only commission we are legally required to have. They are a quasi-judicial board. They make decisions that are very, very important to the progress in our community, and they work very, very close with our planning and, and building department regarding the issues that come before them and make some very important decisions. So it's vital that the individuals that serve on this, which is unpaid, and meet several times a month for several hours, really have a passion for what they're doing, really want to see what's best for the community, and work towards the individual decisions they're making having an impact on the community as a whole. So I want to thank each and every one of you for that commitment and for that time and for that passion, because it's not an easy thing to do, because this affects businesses, this affects homeowners, this affects each and every single one of us, the decisions you're making, much like the decisions we make up here. So I appreciate you and your hard work for that. Does the council have any questions or comments they'd like to make for the, the membership? Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to thank all of you. I think we have a unique opportunity with your participation. I can tell you, I see each and every one of you that have had experience in business, going into business. I know for, for a fact that my commissioner right here is, was a businessman, and as you guys are. And that's one of the reasons I'm so proud, because you guys have an opportunity to expedite things and understand things without sometimes what I see or what I used to see in, in the planning aspect of, of micromanaging somebody's project to a point where sometimes you guys, or somebody's up there just, you know, we're fighting over some landscape, whether it's wood or rock or something like that. And I'm, and I think that's just a waste of time, to be honest with you, okay? I think that sometimes the business owners would appreciate the fact that they have that freedom, since they're willing to invest in Lompoc. So sometimes when we sit there and we spend an hour going over something that's really frivolous, come on, put yourself in their shoes and wear their shoes, and I think you'll make a better decision and a quicker decision. So thank you very much, okay? Because I think your experience is really critical to helping us move forward and, and not so much putting that fear factor into people that have to go through the city and, and Planning Commission. So thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
I'll be quick, I just want to say thank you. You guys don't get paid to, to show up and try to help this community. And each one of you have a valuable role to play. Talked to almost each one of you and gained some valuable insights on ways to think bigger. I can't echo that comment enough. I know sometimes we have to talk about, should it be rock or should it be wood? But I hope that this planning commission is, is not one that is known as a status quo over time, but this is one that said, no, we deserve to be better, we should think bigger. I still have a document from 1997 where somebody at the city paid consultants to look at the blight and the issues and the ways that we should correct some of the things, especially in downtown. And we haven't moved or budgeted on any of those things. So I will be deferring to your group to look for those, some of those ideas beyond just responding to what's in front of you, but what can you bring to the table that maybe we haven't thought of? Or a case study of another place that's done something really well? I'll be looking for that. But again, just thank you for volunteering and for stepping up to help. That's great, appreciate it.
If there's no further comments, we'll open the floor very quickly for public comment, because it is on the agenda. So if you would like to speak to the Planning Commission activities and any related issues, you're welcome to come forward or call in. The number's 805-875-8201. Did we have any general written communications for this joint meeting?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. And while we wait the thirty-second delay to make sure the public has a chance to hear the phone number and turn around, and another ten seconds to dial the number, I will drone on in a way that makes sure that they have their time. But again, thank you. It is important work that you do, and we really do appreciate you. Seeing no one call in, we'll go ahead and close public comment on item number two, and we will adjourn the Planning Commission until the next regular meeting on August 10th, 2022, in the council chambers at Lompoc City Hall. And the city council meeting will adjourn to a regular meeting immediately following this joint meeting at 6:30. Thank you so very much, and have a great evening.